Alright, so I guess we'll start the meeting here. Derek, if you want to say...
So, the two items that we have is change to zoning for the central business district. We would be adding multifamily dwellings with the habitable area in accordance with the size standards of the international building code. So, that would lower it from 400, I believe we currently have, to 300. The reason for that portion is for developers to come in to actually make it more cost efficient for them to put in units above mixed-use places on Market Street specifically. And then the other part is there shall be no off-street parking requirements for any use permitted in this district. The reason that came about was we were talking to some developers and right now we have the requirement for 1.5 parking spaces per apartment unit within 300 feet of the unit itself, or a building in this case. That may be okay for one building, possibly, but with that requirement, it would really hinder development downtown because we quite honestly just wouldn't have enough spaces downtown to meet that requirement. So, if someone wants to walk 10 blocks, or five blocks, or six blocks for a parking space, then kind of have at it. So, those were the two hindrances. We do have people that have been going through variances, zoning for variances, to get these through and pass this way, but really, it was just to not have to go through a variance and make them spend extra money and be a hindrance to developers and really work with developers on this even though they're going through variances, or going through zoning area board and getting variances, basically. For that specific one.
Here's a question. I know Joel's here right now for this to be said. So, if we get rid of that stipulation 1.5 parking spaces in the business district, does that open us up for a can of worms throughout the whole entire city that says we don't, these places no longer need 1.5 places, 1.5 places to park for to get a rental permit or a housing permit, wherever the proper terminology is? Because you're saying it's okay, you don't need it in this part of the city, but everywhere else you do need it. Is that going to pretty much wipe it all out and be open canvas for across the whole entire city then?
So, I mean, I'll let Joel give the legal answer to that, but in my opinion, no, because we do have different requirements for different zones within the city itself. R1, R2, central business district, neighborhood business. They all technically have different requirements, so this would just be another requirement that's different.
Yeah, no, I get that, but we're talking about like housing here. I mean, it's not like, for example, like in certain R1, whatever, you can only build certain type of industry, obviously industrial. You only have industrial, you can't put that in R7. I'm just saying, like, this is apartments, call it what it is. I mean, apartment in business district is the same as an apartment in R7. So, I'm just saying, is it going to open up, I won't say a can of worms, that... Because obviously, we know right now parking is limited across the city because of this nature of the beach. Everyone owns two or three cars nowadays. So, is that going to affect the rest of the city? And just talking about the business district, I'm not saying I'm against this, but where are these people going to park at? And if they do park on Market Street, how's it going to affect the actual businesses on Market Street or parking accessibility for the customers going into businesses?
Do we want businesses downtown or don't?
I mean, these are just conversations, that.
So, we have city lots, there's one that is right off of Market Street.
So, why can't the people going in these parking, these apartments above the buildings park in those spots? I mean, but can we make it, I mean, once again, can we make it a requirement? Because, for example, like, I'll just shoot, I'm not trying to say any business. We'll say whatever businesses, they decide, alright, I'm gonna park, if I have a parking permit or a pass, I'm gonna park on Market Street. And just say there's 10 apartments with two cars apiece. So, that's 20 cars parking on Market Street for only one building itself. Now, if you have three or four buildings in that same concept, there goes all the parking for the businesses downtown. So, I'm just asking that question because we do know...
First of all, you would hope they're going to work.
Well, people work from home nowadays and it's 2025, time to change.
Josh, I can give you a little history. Back in the mid to late 80s, it was right around the same time, maybe early 90s, it was right around the same time we were talking about going to Homewood. And one of the other things that the, we're concerned about was all county employees parking on Market Street. And they tried to force everybody to go over to where Burger King is.
Yeah.
This is pre-Burger King.
Yeah.
And that didn't work. People went out, they came down here, they bought permits, and they said, hey, listen, it's your rules. We don't need to park over the parking lot, we need to park on Market Street with these permits. So, I guess the point is, is that you gotta be careful what you say and how you say it. Number one, number two, unless you have, unless you're gonna go along with the rule. Let's say you can't park someplace, they're gonna be able to park wherever they want. It really doesn't matter what, you know, how you feel about businesses or where you want them to park. It's just the nature of the beast. People can choose who want.
Well, no, I understand that. I'm just saying, like, these are things we need to think about. I know Jim had at least a definitely a very scenario possible when you do these things because one building, I mean, one building could have 20 cars, and you multiply that by three or four buildings, you're gonna lose a lot of parking space on Market Street for businesses for support. So, I mean, that's just something to think about, but...
I think, Mayor, so you sort of have like having the discussion over, and I think the other points to discuss too is like, if we do go through with the amendments, a possibility is that we're also gonna have more people living in the district that can go downstairs and then start spending money at the businesses they live above. So, I mean, I think the parking is definitely a point that's well heard, but then we can also consider that we're gonna have more people, hopefully, living right in the business district that can go out and spend the money right, right there. So, also, I mean, people walking, yeah. Well, and then it also comes to enforcement portion of it too. As far as, you know, aside from a pass that they can park anywhere in the city, if they're not putting in the meat, in for the meters or feeding the meters or have anything like that, there comes that enforcement portion of it to enforce, honestly, the law that we have and the regulations we have as far as that parking.
Well, I'm willing to bet, once you go back to where Spank was talking back in the 90s, I think back in the early 2000s, we used to have two and a half code enforcement, I mean, excuse me, meter officer, and now we're down to a half of one. So, unless...
Back, I believe, when Jesse Woodring was there, it was being discussed because of the fact that the one they have stalls, people had the new apartments above the buildings on Market Street. I think it was changed back in those days that Market Street did not have the requirement wanting to have stalls for that purpose. And like John just said, the foot traffic, and grant you, anybody can buy a permit and park downtown regardless if they live there or not on a daily basis. I mean, my goodness, so...
So, what are we gonna tell businesses when they say, hey, that car's been parked out front of my business for the last three weeks and hasn't moved because the person is to work from home? And you have, what do we say to them? Sorry, too bad, so sad they can park where they want? Because these are, you know, these are questions are gonna be said, and we're gonna be the ones that answer these questions.
Well, here it is. If you want a permit, you can park anywhere with the permit said so. Am I right? What do you say to the person who considers that's the permit?
Because isn't, I mean, I think...
Well, what can you say to that person? Why can't you buy a permit?
Well, I mean, so are you buying it for, for example, you could say, I just want a parking permit in general, or I'm having a housing permit? Like, if you're parking in, well, I'm just making up stuff here, but, but if you're parking above, I'm just gonna make some $100 on shit. You have to park, if you're getting a parking permit, you have to park in one of the lots, you can't park on Market Street.
So, you're gonna tell the, you're gonna tell the manager's office that they got a crazy increase and say, where am I gonna park?
Well, that's up to councilman side, but that's his department.
You could just change the permit to be parking lots only.
That's what my suggestion would gonna be. I mean, if we're gonna look at it and delay who's parking where for what, then I mean, then we can use the city lot as a residential parking lot and give them a discounted price if they're gonna park this.
How much difference did it allow a business downtown to buy this lot?
Well, we do, but they're supposed to pay for it, some of those don't, but...
Okay, but what do you say?
Well, they're...
Yeah, there's plenty of people down on Market Street that are businesses that are parking in rear of them, and they don't wanna do that.
This is also chasing a problem that doesn't exist yet. I mean, like, we have, we have businesses that are here that need more people to go to them. And, I mean, if I gotta park a block or two away, if I'm visiting York or Philly, I'm parking seven, 10 blocks away. And if I wanna go to the business, I'm gonna get to the business. If I wanna visit my friend that lives on Market Street, I'm gonna get there. I don't think it's a difficult concept. We'll get there. And I think more people living downtown is gonna be helpful to not only our downtown businesses, but they're gonna be able to use their cars that they might pay parking permits for, then they can go shop in the rest of the city or across the river, or at the other end of town, or they can go shop at Wise, and hopefully expand the work that Wise wants.
There's a lot of people who walk up and down Market Street who live over these, and they're all parked going down on Wise Market. Every morning, I see that, you know.
I just think we're trying to preemptively regulate a problem that we don't even know what it is yet.
There is one problem. Sometimes, midtown will have a thing going on, like baby shower or something. And that, you go in the fitters, and they're always complaining that people don't have a place to park to get into their... And Mike, and ask the people, make sure you tell your people to park down back, that they park where they wanna park. It's public parking.
Good, all nice to do that, Mike does have. Hopefully, a lot of people will listen, but, you know.
It's public parking, or we want it.
I mean, quite honestly, I think we would all agree that we hope that the downtown people have the problem finding a parking space downtown because that means there's so many people going downtown and visiting these businesses and everything. If anything, I see that as a good problem to have because everybody complains that there's not enough people downtown and walking downtown and going to these businesses and everything. That people talk about the good old days when everybody wasn't there, you couldn't find a parking spot because everybody was walking downtown and going to these businesses. If anything, this is what we're trying to promote and get done. So, I think we'd be so lucky to have people have a hard time finding a parking space.
I remember circling the block, waiting for a spot to open up if you needed to.
Well, that's happened, man.
Or you park up, you know, another block or two away.
On the side street.
But I, you know, we even with like the Albright, we talk about parking all the time. There's not a parking, not a parking, but we've had 250, 350 people there for an event, and we just say, there's your where the lots are, recommend parking on Market, you know, above Fifth Street and beyond. And they do it. I haven't had any complaints, so... And as far as other zones, well, then, you know, let, if they wanna question the one and a half parking spot for residential unit, they may question it. Now that you've done it in the, you might set a precedent, you might feel like, oh, we should get away with it in those areas too. But that's another time for you to consider that. What is your ordinance for your ordinance?
I think there's been variances in the excitement. I, I don't think there's, in all fairness, Josh, I don't know if there's a good answer to any of this. You know, I understand what you're saying about other people coming and complaining, but... And you're talking about a specific area where, you know, it's a lot more concentrated than parking up on Susquehanna Avenue or up on the hillside, you know, someplace up in the hill. Are you that my need? I mean, you park there, you have a house, they don't have 1.5 parking spots per person, per home. And, you know, it's just weird, isn't it? But like John said, even the people with residents living there, it's foot traffic.
Yeah.
A guy coming from work, he'd be like, walking in Obe shop or the new Mexican place over here instead of driving across the river. So, that's a positive.
And it looks like if he goes to Eclipse, he won't be driving anyhow, right?
What is the business district? What are the words, like, for the area?
I can't remember. It's front, it's front on Market to, and then it goes back to...
Fourth, or excuse me, down to Chestnut and Arch.
Is it Chestnut or Arch, or is it the back alleys? I get confused with the historical district. How did it get to the exact parameters?
And there's a little bit on Front Street.
Yes, there's a little on Front Street. I mean, I can grab it. I can get you specifically the parameters and also the zoning that too, if you want, Francis.
Like I said, I was passing, Jesse was here, the same situation because, A, you couldn't find a stall and a half.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
And if you want to take and have people living downtown lose units above the businesses, you have to make sacrifices on a daily basis to take, so you get people living in there. That's one they would definitely want.
How many people live downtown above those places, do you know?
I don't know.
I was wondering if that, if that study did that, or the...
We don't know how many.
Find out, do with full enrollment permits.
Yeah. I can find out.
I'm just curious.
Could be a lot worse.
Just more than you think.
There are a lot of that's unused.
Yeah.
Undelved, unused.
Any other?
Isn't part of the central business district also part of the historic district?
Yes.
Would that create any kind of conflict?
No, not, not for parking. If someone wants to redevelop a building down there, they do have, before they're giving any permits, they do have to go through HARB, and HARB does have to approve them prior to getting any building permits. That's the only, the only crossover in sense of the development aspect, but not, not the parking or anything like that.
I mean, my opinion is I would rather see people in those buildings than see vacant buildings just over a parking issue.
Good point, Joe.
We know the number of places that have people living above them now, do they have businesses underneath them currently?
I would say a lot of them do.
Yeah.
Not all businesses have occupied or rentable apartments above them. But the ones that do have apartments are more likely to have a commercial business downstairs.
Like Marlins, Marlins has, what, four apartments above there? And they, and they have zero parking, you know?
Yeah, right, definitely. I think somebody's sub shop does too.
I know Eclipse does, the billiard parlor does, the...
Jasmine Harrows.
Yeah.
The tourier's too?
The Edison has 50 apartments in it.
Francis, talk to you.
Same as Wilder.
A lot. There's, there's about six up there.
I'm pretty sure.
About six.
About 26 is on the corner of Third Street. What if that's part of that?
You mean Little Addies?
No.
Yeah, there's some Little Addies.
The grocery store?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's someone up there I know of, at least one, I don't know how many, I know of one for sure.
I mean, the Edison Hotel has 50 apartments in it, so it's...
One only above that whole...
I know there's one for sure, I don't know how many other, this one, there's one.
But we can still have people in it up there?
Yes. Unless you change it, but when Lori added those people living up there.
Any other comments, questions, concerns on that one?
Bus, I'd love to see that bus, I don't know what happened to that.
John, you were supposed to drive a bus, that's what happened.
I never went up my bus endorsement.
A bus passenger station?
Yeah.
You mean a driver? Yep, you don't have a driver with a passenger endorsement.
John, it's all up to you.
I hear ya.
It's on your shoulders. I'm gonna pay for your endorsement, John. Your motor, your motor.
I know, I've seen a lot less.
Anything else on that one?
So, bottom line, is this would actually benefit the downtown area?
In my opinion.
Here's a photo of this, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. This is just, yeah, this, we had a first reading a little while ago, but we actually had to change some language in it that was significant. So, our first reading would be today, but we still have a hearing that we have to do, still advertisements and stuff like that, so...
And is that, wasn't this already voted through?
No, we changed things. Are you talking about the solar?
Yeah.
We didn't announce that's what we're moving on to. Does anybody have anything left on the central business district you want? So, the solar, we actually changed some, some language in it, so we have to go through the process again. But the so, the principal solar energy systems is a new ordinance. So, this isn't an amended one, this is a new one for zoning. But it gives stipulations on where they could go as far as principal solar systems, setbacks, time issuance, or permits, requirements, requirements, minimum lot sizes, so things of that nature. I wasn't sure if anybody has some general questions in it. We do have some copies up there, I think everybody, yes.
So, right out of the gates, you already have one company places you could put this, is there anything with Celotex?
This does not affect Celotex because there's court case precedent that you can't have a, or you can't stop someone if they have an application in for zoning and they have one in for a while if your ordinance isn't completely done. So, regardless, this doesn't have any, any bearing on what's going on with the Celotex side at all. This technically are two separate things.
Did, did you change it all, like, the original one I had said open space zoning district, is that still?
This one still has, well, the original one didn't have that in there, but this one does have open.
I'm saying if it only, it reads like it only pertains to the open space.
You are correct. The only place that this would be allowable is in open space zone districts, yes.
So, I lost, the one that just happened with, for the Celotex, that's still an effect they can't put?
No, 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 no.
That's outdated.
Yes, no, that, that can't be done, no.
So, what was approved is no good?
Correct.
Alright.
So, yeah, but it has no bearing, because they've had a zoning application in for a while, or an application in...
So, what do you have to do? You have to take that vote back on that, or what happens?
What do you mean? No, not according to Joel.
What it be?
There's alterations that still have to be done, so...
So, when you voted that there could be no solar panel farm there, that is no longer valid, now they can?
It's not that they can, it's that their ordinance doesn't say, there's no ordinance specifically saying that they, there's anything that prohibits it from solar panels being in the city in general.
According to what I hid for you.
Correct.
You said you cannot, so that is not accurate?
So, there's no ordinance that says that you can't have solar panels in the city, correct, in its current state.
Except for the one that passed, it's not valid.
It's not, it's not valid, correct.
But it was passed and just not valid?
It's not valid, correct.
Plus bizarre.
So, with the Celotex space, or some of it, doesn't that encompass Upper Augusta, according to the signage?
Some of it does. I forget how many, how many acres or...
Shouldn't they be included in the discussion for that property?
It would probably just be on our portion of the property still in Upper Augusta town, should they can do what they want, despite what ordinance says. It's just on the east that would be hitting the city limits. It would be my guess.
And so, they've gone to crossover those, is this helpful to the community?
Yeah, but the signs right there at the top of Susquehanna Avenue.
What, this is what?
That ordinance is old, that's not valid.
Movement.
The sign is right here at Susquehanna Avenue.
Well, as Derek said, it didn't impact the option that was exercised because they had already put zoning applications in.
Mm-hmm, I know, yeah.
The potential stoppage of it. So, either way, even with the old ordinance had stood, it wouldn't have affected them because if the race were from there, the zoning permits were already in, or zoning applications, I'm sorry. So, what happens if they pull out when he person pulls in? As long as this is passed and there's a, a, so then it goes into effect, correct. But for them, they, they, just sort of, they, yes, they still have to go through zoning. They still have to get their, through zoning and everything like that because it's an industrial.
So, why do you think that's not there?
The signage for that.
I'm not saying either way. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying, well, I'm saying they have to go through the zoning like anybody else would for anything.
And when was it discovered that ordinance?
I know, but what if you start doing this, you're not gonna burn yourself, you know?
I think the bigger question is why did you put that out somewhere?
I mean, look what they did with houses.
Question.
Yes.
So, is what you're saying that the ordinance you passed is still past ordinance, right?
But it's meaningless.
But for that particular project, it doesn't apply because they had already had their application, permit applications in. But if somebody new came, now they're new to the property, new, and they're now proposing another solar thing, then the ordinance would be in effect for them. Is that what you're saying?
So, we have to make alterations to the ordinance because there's, regardless, this is, it's still...
So, it's not in effect at all?
Correct, because we still have to go through certain processes. Because with zoning, there's certain requirements that need to be done, and they need to be redone, I guess I should say.
So, if you wanted to do a solar farm?
And the procedure for approving the, the new zoning ordinance to prohibit solar, you need to go through that process again.
Correct.
Because you missed some steps, whatever happens.
Correct.
But it would be meaningless if this company gets it off, right?
I mean, regardless, any of it is meaningless.
Is there a square footage that is deemed okay or not okay in this ordinance? Like, for example, obviously, I'm just using this current company up there to say they wanna put 20 acres of solar.
Yeah, the minimum for this lot size is 10 acres.
So, if it's under 10 acres, I can do it?
No, 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 they can't. As this, there's another ordinance that would have to come after this that is called accessory. I would have to check that.
So, I'm just using, I'm just using this as an example. I know this one happened. Let's just say the Shifting School District wants to put solar panels in the field next to the football stadium. Obviously, it's a new project, a new buyer, new whatever. Does this project prohibit, does this ordinance prohibit them to do it? Since this is a new, since this ordinance, the people at Celotex are grandfathered in. New company comes in, wants to put them down there up next to the stadium. Is that gonna prohibit them from doing that? What will be happening in the books right now?
If there was 10 acres, yes.
Okay, so what if it's, what if it's 9 acres, for example?
I would have to check that, well, technically, it wouldn't be allowed in its current form because there's not, there's, it wouldn't be allowed potentially, I guess I should say, without getting to legal...
Well, the school, the school's actually in R2.
Say that again?
The school's actually in R2 zoning.
That was gonna, that was gonna say. It, it also, there's certain prohibited items in districts, R2, business, central business, things like that. I would have to double check that might fall under language that we're working on, accessory structures. So, accessory, it could fall under that, but there's certain requirements within that, that... I would have to check if you, they might be able to on that part of it as far as the school district because there is a minimum lot size.
Okay, but I'm just, I was gonna say Wise Markets, down there, south in the town, fourth street, whatever. Because a lot of places are putting up roofed parking lots and putting solar on top of it.
Yes.
They go green. Now, is that allowed?
That would be considered except, well, that would be under the accessory. If we didn't ordinance, but currently, there's nothing, to your point, there's nothing prohibited. I don't believe in this. But I think if you look at section 175, 91.2.1, it says about ground mounted principal solar minimum lot size. Yes, correct. You are correct, yes. Thank you.
So, what's the minimum, what's the saying, what's the minimum lot size?
This is minimum size 10 acres. So, this is...
So, so if it's minimum 10, so if they're at 9, that means it is allowed or it's not allowed?
By the reading of this, a ground one... If it's ground mounted, it's not. I don't think that's what it's raised. It says the minimum lot size 10 acres, and to me, that means you need 10 acres in the hole? No, no, he's saying if there's 9 acres, you would be allowed, that's what Josh had.
Right, so if it's 9 acres, you would be allowed, is that what you're saying?
No, it's just the opposite. It has to be a minimum.
So, if it's, so it's...
Minimum 10.
Over 10.
11 acres, you're allowed.
11 acres, you're allowed. For ground, for ground mounted.
So, how many places in town do we have more than 10 acres?
Nobody, Celotex.
Uh... Well, that's great, Joe.
Yeah, I mean, Celotex.
So, is it safe to say they jumped the gun?
The bill has that ordinance said?
Bill, bill.
The old dump. Water company.
You say?
Is it safe to say that that ordinance was just passed?
I would say there was processes that were identified later that made it more challenging that we had to read through.
Can I say if you wanna put a solar farm in now, it's kinda a figure of a fish?
That was good.
I mean, I mean, we've, we've been transparent with the site as company, they've been involved, and we've been talking to them, so they know everything. We've, we've been in contact with them. They're site as represented, I won't say site as, site as represented.
Which I get, but I mean, I wish that somebody would pull this one back out there because we just did four different things saying it was, um, never gonna happen, and now it can't possibly happen, and there's an ordinance that just sits in the sky.
Francis, give you more ink. We're helping you out. Give you a good story, but...
And I appreciate that, but it'll work that way, I think it would. You know what I mean?
Well, Josh, you asked about roof mounted?
Well, I would say roof, well, like, because...
In the back, in the back of the ordinance, it does say roof and wall mounted solar...
I'm not, I'm not referring to roof, I'm just referring to, if you look at some of these newer builds and buildings, like, they have enclosed, not enclosed parking lots, but roof, parking lots, and I know they throw a lot of solar on top of it, because it, you know, it's just better, I can, go green friendly. I just didn't know if that prohibited, if that, if that goes back to the accessory one or that goes back to being ground mounted, because technically a, a parking roof is ground mounted. If it's under ten acres, that means that prohibits them from doing it.
It doesn't, it doesn't have a minimum size, it just says it has to be proven that it can support the weight.
Yeah, of course, I mean, any roof, I mean, engineers are gonna prove that, it's just one of those things.
Doesn't that have, it doesn't have to do with the use, like, so somebody's putting up a solar field, it's all a rate for sole purpose of generating power for money, versus somebody owns a building and says, I wanna put solar on my roof. I already own the building, I'll put solar on my roof to offset my electrical costs and I can sell it back to the PPL or whatever.
And you also go into...
That's the difference.
And you also get into hypermarkets on the building, so it's more like a hypermarket than a...
Yeah, the fresh roasted coffee just puts solar on their roof.
Yeah, that's the thing, but, yeah, on the roof. I'm just referring to like some of these places, like, because solar companies are coming in offering places, you know, have, have parking lots, hey, we'll put a parking roof, we'll put a, a roof above your parking, we'll put solar on. You know, if it's under ten acres, that's what I mean, so.
Are you guys for the solar?
Solar what?
On Celotex?
I kinda like the sun.
Are you for that plan up there?
Noncommittal.
Yeah.
Now I answer a little bit?
I have no comment.
We can't. So anybody here? Is that everybody else?
I'm not necessarily opposed. I'm trying to figure it all out for myself, but it does for everybody, because I think there's a lot that has to be...
You're correct. Has, has anybody investigated the, the more sunshine states, how they're utilizing solar or are they not? You know, like these solar fields, you know, that have more summer type weather than winter? I mean, how's it working for them?
Well, I mean, the seasons are kind of viewpoint, because as long as they're sun out and you're getting it, so that...
I understand that, but you're gonna get more bang for your buck if it's, has more sun. I mean, like, how many, how much sun have we had in the last couple of days?
Julie, I don't know, my, my off the cuff remark to that is I, I don't know what, uh, like, increased rain or snow would do either, because if you have more white on the ground, it's gonna reflect more light on the panels and maybe generate even more, so I don't, I don't know what the data shows on that.
Right, that, that's, there's a lot of unanswered questions.
There is. I don't know.
I will say that, Joe, page three, number three, I'm not sure, but I think that should be part of this.
Page three, number three? Yes, that, I mean, that's my, I have that for the... Should my be, uh... Say that again?
But, but realistically, how much sun have we had in the last couple of days? You know?
I guess that fresh roasted coffee would be a good one to ask, because he likes some of his soles.
Right, right.
We were making fun of him the other week, saying, I don't want his panels.
Well, it's, you know, that's my point, you know?
I mean, also, we also...
Couldn't answer my question when I said how much.
Why, why was it being us if it's a real private property or something like that? Like, for example, let's say this company buys Celotex, puts a solar in, why would they name us as an insurer?
Yeah, no, me too.
They don't have anything though?
Then, you know, what's the, what's the lifetime of the panel? What happens after the panel's dead?
If your house is paid off, then it'll have insurance. So, you know, they, I'm gonna say my house burned down, I don't have insurance, I say I don't wanna, you can have it, but it happens enough.
I think that's what they were talking about, this section right here. Every five years, they have to give a probable cause.
Correct.
Okay, on that property, you have industrial infrastructure called a rail spur. That makes that company valuable for that.
So only as valuable is if someone wants to pay for it.
What if the rail spur, they wanna rip it out? That's kinda stupid.
Well, once again, if the rail wants to rip off their lines...
What you need to do is get a marketing company in there that can get an industry that can be executed.
I'm not...
You have a building there, the old bingo building, which prior to that was a little old, they have two silos in the backyard, they use it for flat yards.
Andrew, you wanna say that? Y'all are quiet.
Al, I'm not disagreeing with you, but once again, it's only as valuable as someone wants to pay for it and, you know, the industrial age, not saying it wasn't a good time, but industrial age is not very prominent in this area. So you gotta find the right business who wants it, who pays for it at the right price, just like anything. Well, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, it's valuable if someone wants to take the value of it, but it's only up to finding the business who wants to be the value of it. I know, like, I know it's marketed online, the property, but once again, it's only what someone wants to pay for it.
Like this, sure, it's corporate, it's open, you might...
The problem with something like tech, technology is...
I mean, we can always change ordinances or have barriers, it can, but it comes down to, it's nothing against neighborhood, but the county, like, the county can sell it to whoever they wanna sell it to, and then we need to see how we can make it work for that company that may buy it. So it comes down to, if the county wants to sell the property too, and then at that point, what the, what the homeowner wants to do with it and how we can make it work for the best for everybody.
So what would that really be, tax revenue for the city, like, the, the solar farm versus, um, I don't, I don't, I don't know, unless, or if you had a manufacturing plant that employed eighty people versus...
So it'd go back to, obviously, if there's, if the more employees you have, they're paying more taxes to the city and we're trading down the fat.
And buildings.
Buildings get taxed along, things like that.
Yeah, so...
Compared to a solar farm that doesn't employ, could be employed one person.
So there's no, there's no tax on the amount of money that they earn by producing solar?
No, so, so, and also solar is, uh, it's private, so it's not public. It's not public till it gets to, there are technically a private, uh, energy company, anybody, because they're, and once it gets to the PPLs of the world or the UGI's or anybody like that, that's when it becomes pub, a public utility. So anybody that is before that is not governed by the PUC and therefore also considered private.
So you're saying that if, um, if a solar farm should go in there, there's really no, the, the tax benefit, the tax revenue benefits to the city is minimal?
Zero.
Zero.
It's land, land.
You have to go tax on the land, that's basically it, and maybe if they have someone there working, one or two people.
Property tax.
Uh, to clean up the solar panels.
Maybe I'll have something there.
But that you, but...
But they, but utilize it.
The usage, will the usage be, or is this gonna be minimum usage, you know?
Then you only have somebody hired to go around the solar farm, the solar farm and maintain, they don't have somebody there twenty-four seven to watch it.
Yeah.
So you could say you would prefer something else over a solar field.
Well, and here again, if you're getting the water and sewer usage, you have to get this there.
That's what it is, but you're not that, right?
You'd get bare minimum, because they would have water and sewer.
I mean, more than what you're getting now, I guess.
I know, they would have sewer there.
I would imagine, I would imagine, and you would have, I won't say you have to, but for...
They would have building there, something.
Uh, not for that.
They would drop, drop out.
That, honestly, they, I don't think they would have a, even a bathroom or anything like that there.
So then it's useless for the, for the city as far as...
I'd have trouble goods cleaning up the ground.
I would say it might have more goods than employees, potentially.
Like, let's say it goes back to, we don't know if the property goes up to, it's up to the county, what they sees best for themselves in the long, in the long term.
And they still have to go through zoning. I'm sure they would... I think both players have been at the table for years and it's somewhat developed.
You would think.
Well, I'd tell them to drop the price a little bit too. That's not your, that's not your... Well, they're different, lower offers, it's just the...
Did that company, did it make the purchase or still not?
Yeah, it's just like a...
They exercise their option extension.
That's the one we've already talked about.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna rain on anybody's parade, but since, uh, January twentieth, there seems to be a lot of changes that might be coming our way, so you might wanna take that into consideration as well.
She's talking about Trump doing an office and the policy changes.
Inauguration. Do you see how many changes that he's already signed off on? Who knows? Stupid, couldn't figure that out.
All right, is there any more on the solar ordinance? Any other public comment at this time? All right, is it safe to adjourn the zoning meeting? All right, adjourn.